You're the ones getting killed because we're late.
I'm just waiting to make an entrance.
Probably shouldn't tell anyone.
We're not the last ones yet. The others haven't still got here yet. Yeah, they're all in character. Uh, I'm just starting up my stream right now. Okay.
Oh, for god's sake. Todd and I spoke and went and said Smasher would probably know Rogue then, and Flurry just went...
Oh no, this music's so evil that I feel like I keep it. Jay-Z must hear.
What if Hanski showed up first?
What'd you say? Can I go in first? No, you can't.
Okay, okay.
You can't. Because you need Nemesis to get up here in the fucking first place.
Okay, good, okay. Yeah, I would have been so nervous walking in anyway.
Because if you were about to tell me that you brought Gomunda with you as your plus one, I was gonna tell you there's no way he can get through the fucking gate, because I would have said no.
Bruh.
Wait, I gotta get my chair ready, because I have to fucking... Okay. Now I fashionably late, because hell's here.
We are fashionably late, never. I love...
We're actually pretty early. Because... I... You love Malius. I don't love Malius. For good reasons. I love the character, hate the fucking... Being. Is that a stinky Mimica? It is. Oh, Christ.
Is Bardue already in there?
Yeah, he is.
Yes.
Oh, look at Aki.
Because, Kate, you're not stupid.
Go, little boy, go.
No, no, I left that on the counter.
Yeah, count's up when you go in.
Please don't fuck me over.
Bet you're walking with me, right? Just over here. Okay, there you go.
Hanski, do you think you can guide me?
I can't even fucking see you. This is how fucking wild this shit is. Am I sliding? Fucking sliding. God, this shit. Hanski, invisible fuck. It's like, where the fuck did you go? I can see his holographic face.
Okay. Anybody have buttons? I just want to make sure.
I have buttons.
Yeah, people have buttons.
Yes.
Yeah, good. Um, alright.
So I'm gonna... I'm gonna use a la- I'm gonna use a different one. I'm sorry for switching in advance.
You're good. There's not many of us here.
You're scared, we're in charge, go.
Oi, back here, you fucking shithead.
I'm going in first.
No, you're not.
Alright. Ready? Both of you?
Yes.
Okay.
Let's begin. I was waiting for Mr. Malius.
He's enjoying the scenic route.
How come he?
Please.
Apologies, everyone.
It's surprising.
You could say I was fashionably late.
Hmm.
Hello, Mr. Malius. Hmm. Calypso?
Good to see you again.
Likewise, darling. There are new faces here. Interesting.
Well, I can't believe any of the council could bring... Uh, any of their own. But with that said, I'm not too sure if Mr. Joel will be coming in or not. I did get his signature, but... We'll see if he comes in late. No, he typically likes to do that. Right. With that said, this meeting... Will start. News on the front of hearing that more ZMF activity has been marching around the lower sections, mostly in waterfront, and I'm seeing them slowly making their way into my district as well. Any reports in your own districts?
Not on my end. Yet, at least.
From what I can tell, it seems to be the ones who've caused... The most uproars of the past year.
I have to apologize, I'm not quite sure. Maybe my father would know, but not that he tells much.
Right. Hopefully next meeting, you'll be more informed about it, or at least notified. But keep an eye on what's going on in your district, if you're gonna be a representative for him. Right. Anything to bring to the table before we fully start on going down the list?
I've brought an individual here as a guest today to say they're witness of the ZMF. Seems they've had deep interactions with them. Hamsky.
Very much.
Apart from that, nothing else.
Hmm. And before we get there, I'd like to introduce you to a friend of ours. He'll be within our own payroll for all of us, making sure that things that get really too drastic, they'll be sending him in, but it will be within council agreement to send him in.
I'm aware of him.
Sorry.
Adam.
Nemesis.
Right. So, Hamsky, why don't you start with your account, on what you've been dealing with the ZMF?
Uh, the ZMF have been coming down to the Meat Rack and staring, watching. We've been trying to cut back on the chaos, but outside forces are coming down and causing issues outside of our control, like corporations, MedsTech.
At that point, Nemesis should be in play with that, haven't you, Nemesis?
The corporations, some of them have been ideologically overstepping their boundaries. I've spoken to some of them, they have. MedsTech is doing their job. I double-checked with them.
They caused chaos and they shot a maelstrom in the street. We had everything under control until that point. We would have looked clean.
You mean scum.
Though, from Hanski's account, things are not in order. I suggest you probably get things in order, Nemesis. Before, well, things get worse for all of us.
That brings in the next account. Maelstrom.
Hmm. What's so special about those maelstroms?
Are you aware of their recent actions of late?
It's just another gang.
However, they're causing something a little extra. MedsTech has informed me of a couple of things. As well as other organizations and groups, including the Meat Rack. Your staff members have also informed me that these so-called problems have been appearing as well. People with cyber psychosis going rampant. Maelstrom is creating them at this point, and the activities have spiked drastically. I say we send Adam to clean some of it up.
Adam will cause too much casualties, you know that. And if anything, because of a lot of legal ripper docks in your area, that's the reason why there's so much cyber psychosis. Or anywhere, anywhere, to be honest. We need to crack down on these ripper docks to prevent it from the source.
At the current time and moment, there's only three. I want to keep it that way. If you find out any more than three, please let me know. I guess for all of you.
Waterfront is not my jurisdiction.
It's not. But I'd like to hear if there's more.
Alright then.
It's Maelstrom. I'm calling them agents or assets. They do not carry themselves similarly to the other gangs I have witnessed. I've been around the Meat Rack as a patron. When they show up or begin to make themselves noticeable and they carry themselves as bunting-to-be targets almost. It feels like they want to have people fight them and to cause noise. Almost.
Hmm.
Cat gang would come around and at least somewhat talk. I've seen some Maelstrom come in and just open fire.
If they're, uh, causing issues, we could always combat them with some of our own gangs in Zephira.
Hmm.
Like if they're overstepping bounds and we gain control over, you know, specific gangs, like maybe the Whispers or something, we could use them to combat the other gangs to lower their uh, numbers. Less casualties on our side than ZCPD, but just a suggestion.
Speaking of which, the ZPD. I have been informed by multiple people. The ZPD is being liquidated by the ZMF.
I'm not sure in which way of how or what they're doing towards those who are already part of ZPD. Either they're recruiting them into the ZMF, or just basically closing down this, uh, precincts and taking them over and putting themselves there. But, well, since we have an officer here, is there any accounts that you've heard of anything?
It's the first I'm hearing of it.
Hmm, might have not reached the district yet. It must be mostly towards the industrial and waterfront so far, right now. Most likely in the outer rim of things. Makes sense for that part. Should be a concern, though.
Is there any stopping it?
No.
No.
Is that necessarily a bad thing either? I'm just curious.
It's more so of we don't know what they're up to. Right?
We don't. And there's higher and higher activity of the ZMF within the waterfront.
We want to show that we're complacent and willing to work with them instead of being an obstacle. Right? If they feel like we're endangering up above, right? Well, they'll see to it, we'll do whatever they need to do to make sure their space is protected.
I could attempt to try to get some information for you. Especially if they come to District Zero. Work with them and try to weed out what their motives are.
This is a crucial moment for all of us. We join the council here, right? The most likely work together and not fight each other at each throats. If anything, Malius, maybe you could provide her with some official documents, at least to make them, uh, feel like they should keep her around. Instead of either firing her, whatever the case is, if they do come around their precinct.
It would be my pleasure, Lolo.
Thank you.
Right. Any other pressing issues?
Gildea, the system. Would you like to show and tell of what we've walked on so far?
The bounty system has been completely reconstructed and revamped, at least a test variant of such. Formal forms, background checks, inserts in place. Had several individuals test filling out forms, uh, putting themselves through the systems. And so far, it seems to be effective on weeding out diplomatic individuals.
Hmm.
However, I have sent up a countermeasure that will let you propose to council alongside with the system. We have the vigilante system in place. Some districts allow vigilantism. However, if we allow vigilantism to stay the way that it is and have this bounty system take off, the bounty system will get nowhere because the vigilantes are entrenched. It'll have the, uh, red tape they still have at the car tape launch, if you will. I propose alongside my system, it would be similar to two systems under one office of, uh, the vigilantes
will be coming in.
As well as the bounties.
Yes.
Hmm, continue.
With that, it is a similar system which they have to reapply, be assessed. They will not have access to the bounties that we provide. However, if something happens in any of our districts, there is a pool of individuals that you can call upon, similar to a QRF of sorts.
Hmm. Works for me.
I did have some stuff to bring up, actually.
Go for it.
On that point, I did want to ask if I could maybe we, uh, get vigilante IDs approved for District Zero? We haven't had those even remotely talked about, um, yet. So, I agree with your bounty idea 100%, but moving our whole district to that whole bounty idea before we even had vigilante IDs, I think would be a bit of a step for a lot of our populace there.
The IDs are being sorted out.
Oh, awesome. Okay. Uh, I also wanted to report that, uh, recently the black market in District Zero was disbanded. That is no longer a thing. I'm not sure if there's markets anywhere else in other districts that are pop- being populated at the moment.
I'm pretty sure there are many black markets, small, large, what have you. Either having other businesses as their fronts or, hmm, uh, doing other, well, dangerous things. So, I'm not too sure. So, Malius?
Yes.
Hmm, you were, uh, giggling, saying that you might have known about something about market district or a black market?
Oh, just the fact that there are dozens of those within my district.
Hmm.
Now, there are a few dangerous ones, I will admit. Selling things such as dangerous items, uh, people even. I've been attempting to snuff them out as best I can. However, several vigilantes run these businesses. And they are quite powerful in their own right. As I assume most of you realize, these vigilantes are everywhere in Zephira. And some of them could level entire districts if they see fit. Now, it's our job to play this very carefully. Try to make them happy until we can find a way to lick out their flame.
I have a couple of methods of punishment if it's needed to be done.
And I guess that's something for me to bring up. I've been working on something, and I've been meaning to perfect it and present it to the council. Obviously, you probably know about my relic within the Purple Lotus of whatever it can do. Right? I've been developing an item called conduits. Basically, it brings the effect of the relic there to where it, well, needs to be put. So, let's say if these vigilantes are in an area or put the conduit in their vicinity of their workspace, it would most likely nullify their abilities. So if anything, if they have caused an issue, we can use said conduits to apprehend them. All we need is what? Strong enough force to manhandle.
These sounds like they would be useful for, uh, uh, ZCPD stations as well. If you can manufacture enough of them.
Hmm.
I've been working on something similar, and however, mine is more localized and specifically on the magic department. Seems there's a lot of individuals, including vigilantes and bounty hunters alike, who have been using magic quite voluntarily. To the point where they are blowing up not just buildings, but also destroying generators of the sorts that are powering hospitals.
I, I did want to mention that, um, District Zero has been having a lot of power outs recently. Uh, due to the, you know, water damage, so if that affects any of your districts, uh, we're dealing with it quickly.
Hmm. Like I said, uh, from the last meeting, I did said that if you need aid, I will manage to either do, uh, send it. Either it's monetary or, well...
We've already been receiving, uh, your aid, so yeah, thanks.
Good.
Jorba gets here, you can ask him to fix your lights.
Speaking of, I would like to move to replace our two absentees.
Hmm.
Jobat and your father.
That's more on the person and not, well, since he has a representative here, right, already, so he will not be removed. If something happens to him, well, he will most likely take his place.
He has been here more than most of the others.
Him being here is an attempt for his father to show good faith. He is a busy man.
Aren't we all? Yet we find the time. I think Aki is the perfect suitor.
As Councilman Sachi said, until something happens to his father, in which I hope he keeps good health for a very long time, he is not to replace him, but to learn his job. Aki will have his time. Just not yet.
Hmm, thank you.
And Jobat. Ever since he's taken seat, I've barely interacted with him personally. Is he even doing his job?
He's been doing internal affairs here and there, but like I said, the scrapper is an ever-growing problem, though I have since smashed her in the deal with some of the opposition, though, like I said, they are cockroaches.
If we're on this topic, then what about the Palace District?
Palace, that is without a council member. I do know that some individuals there, uh, I believe, Pixel of Tech Support has been trying to make a name for it, as well as other individual corporations, but that place is always in war. We don't know who will come out on top.
Hmm, so we merely wait for someone to rise to the occasion?
Exactly. Someone that at least can hold their ground.
Exciting. And we cannot have our own, Mitzanet. Otherwise, it won't happen.
Hmm. Right, anything else to bring up, uh, other than other council members that you might think might be suited?
At this current time and moment, my only concern is the ZMF. Apart from that, nothing really else. The system that has been put in place by Gildea is working. Gildea will assist you with the vigilantes.
Hmm.
I wanted to ask, do we have a spokesman or somebody that speaks on behalf of the entirety of the ZCPD or is it separate between each district?
It's sometimes different, depending on what overlaps what, sometimes it's different, right? Um, but ZPT doesn't really answer for us too much. But, well, in good graces, we have Lona here to, well, that has reached the handout. And wanting to most likely keep the peace as well as everyone here.
Maybe it would benefit us in the future to have someone that can speak on behalf of them all? I'm not saying offer a lot of...
When the council speaks in order with the ZPD, we all respectfully have to tell the ones within our districts what is happening and what they need to do.
Hmm. Hmm.
If we are not on the same page, then we come back here.
Hmm, and with that said, even though Lona's here, ZPD is, well, a payroll from up above. Right, we don't necessarily have authority over the ZPD. We can benefit, we can benefit them by, well, giving them what they need, whether it's money or supplies, right? But the one that pulls the trigger is up above.
We can merely just tilt the aim.
Do you think perhaps if hmm, I know we don't really speak with the ones up top very often, but considering they're getting more active down here or making moves based on what you said in the previous meeting, do you not think maybe it would benefit us to try and get somebody, a part of the council from up there? And maybe not directly connected, but an in-between? So at least we can have some control or even just some kind of information pull?
At most, what we can do is wait and see on where are they going to stop and where? Because at least where they are, they set up a base, we can send someone over there, represent us, or if at all, any one of us to be there and talk on our behalf and seeing what's going on. We're in a very tricky situation. Because we don't know what they want. My theory is more so because of all the craziness that has happened for the past year is the reason why. And so that's why I'm asking those of their districts to keep things down low.
Problem being, is some of these individuals that are not vigilantes have caused a fair amount of problems.
Hmm.
Facility caused the problem that happened, but they also fixed it.
As I have to remind you, Facility is no more in the culprit. That caused the whole issue, but the outbreak is dead. That's a good news.
And within the prisons, Gildea, any other issues with this plague?
Situations have been corrected with the ether diminishing. Less, I guess you could say, pop-ups have been happening. Cleaning up as, and somewhat difficult people are paranoid. However, construction repairs and cleaning is underway. And the population's predicament is slowly being corrected now.
Wonderful.
Right. Hamsky, you have anything else to bring up from your side of things?
Oh, finally, some solutions for problems. The waterfront is a fucking mess and we can't keep people calm because they're struggling. And you guys can sit up here and talk, but it won't help keep people calm if you're just talking. And Nemesis has promised to fix some of these things. I know, and I'm saying it in front of him so he sticks to his word. The water in the waterfront is disgusting. We can't drink it, especially around the meat rack. We've been struggling with it for a year. We can't bathe in it. It's disgusting.
Being sorted.
There's a lack of food. Everything's processed, like, and outsourced. We are using the most disgusting fucking hamburger meat, or we have to go somewhere else to get it. Uh, the pollution in the air burns our lungs. It, it's hard to grow plants. We can't grow anything besides weeds and mushrooms. I've had people analyze it. Um, there's no sunlight.
And that is a problem caused by the Upper City. Continue.
There is no sunlight. Again, the pollution is blocking out the sun and everything. Crime happens because of a lack of opportunity. Busting people is gonna lead to more crime. People are trying to survive, and some corporations have crushed us. They've crushed local businesses and made it harder to even fucking make money down there.
Hmm.
I'm suggesting regulations on corporations of some sort. That's up to you guys. Also, we have
Only up the Nemesis.
Again, the outside sources coming in and causing problems. The meat rack has fought for the meat rack this entire time. We have kept everything safe. We're the safest place in the waterfront. Something needs to be done.
What exactly is the meat rack?
A bunch of, a bunch of chucklefucks and peasants. And we have fought to survive down there.
Same here, everyone. Are you a food provider, a store? What are you?
A community.
You're not the police. A community?
A bunch of people that have struggled to survive.
Survivors. It sounds like little old Nemi here hasn't helped you at all.
I have. Hamsky, if I may help explain in a way that Malius might understand a bit better?
Do it.
The Meat Rack started off as a bar owned by Mr. Hamsky that grew into a collection of businesses owned by himself and his associates. When he says "community," he means the community run by himself and his associates within the waterfront district. And shops, places to get food, places to sleep.
I was, I was homeless and squatting in a building I would have been thrown out of if it wasn't for the people around me. We built that, not others.
Sounds like a small mini district.
Nemesis has promised to help us, and I'm making sure he sticks to that.
I stick to my wand, Hamsky. You can ask everyone in these seats. I stick to my wand. I cannot help with the pollution because it is caused by the Upper City. But I'll find a method. I wish you brought this up to us, to me. When I asked you personally a week ago, the issues, and you only now bring up more.
In front of everyone.
Hmm.
So, filtration systems. Shall we all come aboard to helping with filtration systems because of the Upper City?
Sounds like a bit more of a you-issue nemesis.
We don't have a lot of power as-is and diverting not much power to create things like that.
He's not wrong.
If I may, uh, offer a simple suggestion for you, Nemesis? Just one idea. At least a way to keep the coolant from raining on the people on the streets. I'm not saying stop it, but at least perhaps a covering of some kind. Down in the meat rack, it's kinda hitting everyone constantly.
Stop people from throwing shit out their windows or whatever the fuck they're doing up there.
I know in other districts, the coolant is constantly raining down. So if you can find a way, or if any of you do, it'll help all of us, not just myself, with my people. Maybe we might even be able to put it to some use for more power.
Council would like, myself and possibly I am, could start researching some methods to figure something out. I got a couple ideas.
Why don't all of you from the meat rack just come on by my district? We could show you a bit of our memory lapses, put you in a good spot mood-wise. Well, good old Nemi here rebuilt. How about that?
No.
No? He's made it very clear that he's fought where he stands and where he stays.
Hmm.
And those are my kind of people. Stubbornness until death? Flucious, if you ask me. It's survivability.
If I may?
Rogue, go on, Lona, sorry.
The meat rack is one place where this happens. It affects everyone in the city, other districts, not just the water one, or water district. So if we, if you were to implement a fix there, what about everyone else?
I'm not thinking about just the meat rack. It was just a, exactly, it was merely an example. If a solution is found, it would be spread throughout all the districts with the permission of the council.
How and with what resources?
That's what we plan to figure out. That's what research is for. Can't just come up with something right here on the spot.
Dismiss your idea, but you have to consider the fallout of something that large, that large of a project. You're trying to account for billions of people in a condensed area. You're two people. You need a lot more.
Very, very smart people that are very good at what we do.
I might be able to provide something here. I've been assessing the prison populations, and I have. And not to anyone's surprise, the city has not undergone full copper repairs since, uh, the different incursions from Zaris and previous threats. One of the ideas that I had for reducing prison population was going through any records that I had and seeing individuals that showed potential for, uh, rehabilitation, not mass murderer reserve. Violent individuals like that, but someone that was incarcerated for petty theft since their home was destroyed. From combat within the city, women incurred watching threat. Find individuals within the prisons that know trades, plumbing, carpentry, something. Establishing them as foremen and making, uh, labor groups. They do sentences for those willing to rebuild or assist with projects, and they leave their prisons. Assisting their communities as well as not just throwing out, they at least know a trade or some way of conducting business.
I like it.
We wanna help. Yes, I like it too. We wanna help with everyone. But the mass of the city, right, even if we use every single prisoner that are, well, has these skills, it would take decades.
But not line it up in conjunction with the synthetic district. Oh.
Older synthetic models that don't have purpose anymore or have outdated protocols, you can offer them new protocol systems and then allow them the opportunity to go ahead and assist the same way that those who are being reformed inside of the prisons would be effectively offered that opportunity. So therefore, you double the chances of having twice the workforce, being able to prompt out the materials and resources necessary to go ahead and construct whatever it is, whatever type of plan that we can come up with.
Right.
That works.
Well, it could work, right? It sounds good, but there are other issues, like I said, other places that need to be attended. Nemesis District needs to be rebuilt.
A large majority of it does due to the problem that has recently happened. But it is being sorted. I just need more hands for action.
Hmm. I feel like right now, since we've been most likely focusing our own districts, right, Malius has most likely been well, well capable with an institution, even from the incursion from Zaris that happened, uh, about two years ago.
The market is brand new as of now, and I am building new projects as we speak. I believe the garden and the market are on best of, uh, conditions currently.
Exactly.
We could provide you aid, Nemi.
We could provide you aid, Nemi. You merely need to ask. I aided your refugees, I could aid you in other aspects.
Hamsky is shaking.
I'll think about it.
Take your time.
Right, Rogue, you brought up some concerns yesterday, would you like to go over them again?
Of course. First and foremost, there seems to be some confusion. Some information was brought to my attention by a third party that no one is aware of who controls ZMF. I know you all are more than likely aware. But some people seem to assume that Gildea have people under his control, that other council members have a militia of such under their control, but the information seems to be baseless. On top of that, I mean no offense by this, but no one seems to know the truth about the whereabouts of your father, or if the fact that he's just remaining hidden away of his own accord is believable.
My dad is very much alive.
Problem is just weird, not everyone trusted.
His father is very, uh, strew with paranoia, right? He used to come to these meetings with his tendons swelling in a TV or a radio to have his voice, uh, come out of. And talking about the militias and whatnots, each council member has their own forces, especially to deal with any situation within their own districts. But ZMF is something that we can't control, CBD is also something we can't control. We can provide support, the most likely get lean see, well, more like said, aim the gun somewhere else. But Upper City is what controls them.
I will be honest.
Another concern that was...
On the militia thing, my father, um, has organized a militia group currently. Uh, they have been taking positions of the ZCPD specifically in our district. It was when gang activity was at its highest and we were trying to remove it. He hired people to join forces to remove of the problem swiftly. This has died down though since.
One of the other concerns that was brought to my attention was Calypso, your other half seems to be vying for a seat on the council. And it brings great concern to quite a lot of people.
Are unfit to be a council member.
Yeah, that's hard.
As I said. Oh, here she comes out. You wanna, Annie, you wanna move? And there's Adina.
Really now? After everything I've done?
You're reckless and still a child.
Out of all the people, you are calling me a child now? Have you seen what I'm capable of?
Yes, destruction.
And guess what it has brought?
Ruin.
Ruin. And also the reason you're sitting in this chair, Father.
The reason he's sitting in that chair is because myself and others of the men of Facility 724 went and retrieved him.
Really? I didn't know, Rogue.
Oh? Do you wanna tell me why you even had the time to do so?
You were too busy cohabiting with Gregor.
Oh boy. Watch your tongue.
For all he was here.
Dina?
No.
What?
Watch yours.
If anything, this is a missed opportunity. I suggest you think about this again, Father.
You're not ready. I, I will say.
Have a lovely night, everyone.
Apologies for that.
If you had any.
I will admit, I do have one other concern that I was reminded of. There seems to be some concern and confusion as to the citizenship of Synthetics in the city. Many of them aren't sure whether they're citizens or just tools, despite some of them, many of them having sentience.
If anything, right, we share the same both. We're not actually Sephirans, uh, Sephirans, right? To them, we're refugees or tools, resources, well, resources they don't want. And even that follows, it follows in with the Synthetics. As up to the districts and their council members on what they want to decide to do with said Synthetics in their district.
Understood, I appreciate the answer. Another growing concern is there has been an increase in disappearances and attacks on people in various districts from what I'm aware of. Seems to be a group that I've been told is called Legion, picking up arms against people.
Unrelated.
Ironically.
Yes. At most, right? It's nothing different than the usual city life of people disappearing and being attacked. Right, you have gangs, there's Maelstrom, there's cats, scrappers, right? This is another one on the list. Anything other concerns?
I have nothing else to bring forward.
Very well. Does anyone else from the seats have anything to bring up?
Hmm. I just have a question for Gildea, that's all. I brought an individual today that I think would work quite handsomely. Bleeding and possibly correcting the other vigilantes, seems he's done quite a good job over the past year. With my allowance of permission. Ion. Like to take upon this opportunity. This is your offer.
Exactly what am I doing?
Working with me and Gildea to make sure the vigilantes are staying within their boundaries. And you could possibly add some questions of the sorts later on. And correct some boundaries so they're aware of what they can and cannot do within the districts. A face for the vigilantes.
I'd need time to think on it.
Understood. Does anyone else have objections to this?
I think it's mostly gonna be up to Gildea.
If we had like faces for each district, it'd be kinda cool. But I'm not against it.
Could work out. Though I'm pretty sure Gildea will be working on things here and there with these files.
I've almost worked out all the fines as well to bring that to the table.
Hmm. With that said, does anyone have anything else to bring to this meeting?
It's not really related, but, uh, Nemesis, I did want to, uh, work with you a bit more directly. If I could speak with you in private sometime. It's a low matter, I don't wanna bring it to the table, really. Oh, uh, and I do have some solutions for you, Mr. Um, Hamsky, was it?
I don't want your gangs in the Meat Rack, or the waterfront, I guess.
Oh, I, it had nothing to do with gangs, sir. It was to help with your pollution issue.
We'll talk it over after the meeting.
Right. Rise when you're ready for this meeting to be adjourned. Right, with that, this meeting is adjourned, thank you all for coming. You may mingle and talk amongst yourselves, if not, you may leave.
I guess I have some time.
Alone. Hamsky.
If there's one thing I am going to make very clear to you, do not bring up new matters in front of them. They won't give a shit.
I need to make sure you're gonna do what I say.
I will. But do not do this again. I've always held my word, Ion can attest to this.
Well, there's already someone offering us help with the arrow and you said you couldn't.
What? Zero? I am glad that you have individuals like Rogue and Ion who are willing to find something of the sorts. I'm doing everything else I can. I have made that quite clear to you.
I promised everyone.
So is there any other problems you want to bring up?
I'll find them and I'll bring them to you.
You haven't already? Good. Then you're free to leave or to mingle with the others. If you wanna speak to both of us, sure.
Yeah, I, I'd love to. Um, hi, I'm Aki Koda.
I'll do fist bumps, I don't know if you're a demon or some shit.
Oh no, I'm just a human kid. Um, so I, I kinda wanted to talk about your, uh, pollution issue that you've got going on. Uh, we can't fix that in Sepira, that's almost impossible, but we can, uh, help negate it to some degree. I was considering, you're the first person to really bring this issue up and you have a place of business. I was wondering if maybe District Zero could start, start offering people with, uh, personal generators to kind of, i- it goes in line with the idea that your friend had originally with making turbines and stuff like that to kind of remove pollution in areas. Not large to remove massive amounts, cause like I said, that's a lot of power. But if District Zero can start manufacturing small generators that can do this, maybe we can confide it? And kind of push it elsewhere. Unfortunately, the downside to this is it has to go somewhere. So, yes, your place of business would be clean, but perhaps we could push it on to some corporate people that, you know, are better off than others. Just a suggestion.
Or if we use those, I want no strings attached, we pay for them.
Then could also be another way to regulate unwilling corporations. If they're not willing to pay for their fines, then it could be pushed upon them.
It wouldn't be tied to anything and you wouldn't be in any danger, I mean, if anything, it would be linked to District Zero since we will provide them.
I'll talk to my people.
Which if you are approached, you, you can, you know, shove it onto us, I guess.
Let me talk to my people and make sure they're okay with everything.
Sure, we'll have to talk out expenses and probably get them manufactured first and I might have to come see what this Meat Rack is.
With expenses, you'll have to come to me, seems I have all the banks in order currently.
Yeah, also making something in someone else's district, you know?
Okay. Honestly, I'm glad I said it. Thank you.
Yeah, uh, I know it's a bit weird for me to, I, I want to help. My goal here is to kind of unite the council a little bit more, they're reluctant, as you can see.
Bold wishes.
Better than my father's, that's for sure.
Maybe you won't drown.
I wanted to extend the offer of helping with your district more. I have this feeling that some people at the top of the table are a little bit better off than some of us. And when they offer their help to you, I feel like it's more of a spit in the face. I want to directly help you as someone that's not as better off. And if we form our districts kind of together with this support, maybe we can become a lot stronger, like the market and Garden. It's not to cause tension or something, but the offer is there. We have money, I guess, that goes nowhere.
Are you free after this?
I'm afraid he has to return now, as soon as possible.
Yeah, sorry.
Then we can do it later.
Sure.
Nemesis. Aki. This individual right here, well, he's very reliable, strong, and very, uh, resourceful. His name is Gormunder. If you ever need any assistance.
I'm sorry, Sachi, for embarrassing you. You made the mistake. I am the strongest.
Oh, brother, you're still on about that?
You wish to prove me.
Regardless.
No thanks, I'd rather eat pizza.
No, no, right. If you ever need assistance, right, feel free, why don't you talk to them a little bit, Gormunder? Hamsky, I need to talk to you. I slowly, I slowly put it in their head, so at most, like I said, even a small district. Prove yourself, talk to them individually, see if you can gain their favor. And maybe you can break away from Nemesis and work your way on your way up.
I don't know, I'm kinda liking pressuring him. He got in my face and I was trying to smile. He got in my face and I was trying to smile.
Well, that's what I'm saying. He can't do anything here, but he could do many things to you out there. Right? Gain the others' favors. Gain their votes. Let them push you to be a council member. Not you, them.
Okay. I'm still deciding on that, actually. Also, is that kid a demon or something? The fuck is he?
I don't know.
Well, how do I?
I'll leave you be. Now talk. Say hello, introduce yourself more. He's right there.
Sachi, uh, Mr. Hamsky.
Yes?
Uh, I gave my contact to your counterpart as well, but I would like to speak with you soon. We might share similar ideals.
I'm You're a cop?
Yes, technically. It's a bit more convoluted than that, though.
Alright, we can talk. What was your name? Luna?
Uh, Lono.
It's nice to meet you.
You too. By all means, enjoy the rest of your night.
I don't think I'm gonna enjoy this part. Why are you standing in the dark?
Why not?
It's a little evil. Hamsky.
Evil?
By the way, what we met, never mind.
I recognize your appearance and smell. Curious that you would show yourself here, though the bongs to do so, especially in front of your district leader.
I'm well aware that I'm probably gonna die if I talk over some people.
Oh, we aren't that evil. In fact, we have your best intentions. This is a very beautiful and solemn cathedral, my boy. Nothing more. Sets the mood, you could say.
Pardon my language. Get some lights. I thought I was gonna cuss in there, my bad.
So, your people, your community are unhappy, that much is clear. And if I recall, you were sort of a bastion for folks in the war?
We I started it alone. It was abandoned. And then we fought everything that came our way. So yes, a bastion of sorts, especially during the Aether.
Perhaps I underestimated you. You have my apologies for my earlier accusations. It's not every day that people like you are allowed in here to speak over us.
I like it when they speak and when they prove action. Of course, I would bring something like him here. I do not care what negative light it could show. But the fact that he's proven himself has my respect. So you will respect him as equally as me?
Hmm, of course, Emmy, of course. If I had a meat rack like yourselves in my district and I was somehow in some alternate universe, my district was in danger. And you provided it safety for the people, I guess I would respect you.
It wasn't just me, it was everybody down there.
Everybody, yes, the community. Wonderful. Ah, gives me shivers. Perhaps I should come wrestle in the mud with all of you. And see what the meat rack is all about. Of course, I would always tell you if I were to arrive in your home.
Uh, one second, you no one down there is gonna like you being down there. You're gonna scare people.
Hmm.
Cause a panic.
You're scary to them.
Hmm. Gee. Maybe I should come in a disguise and put on a mask or something. Go incognito.
Hamsky, I am leaving. If you'd like to follow, you can.
I'm staying.
I'm having business outside of here. Come on.
And Ion, good to see you.
Actually, I'm gonna go. It was nice meeting you, Malius.
Safe travels.
Hope you're well, Mr. McKay, no offense.
Break it down.
I'm throwing bullets.
You did fine.
Yeah, Hamsky, you did alright?
Thank you. Uh, Malius is fucking freaky and he said he's going to the meat rack in a disguise and I fucked up. Shouldn't have come here.
Can you give his cream filled doughnuts?
What? No, what the fuck?
Actually, you know, this might be a good idea if he comes and sees all the problems and stuff that you talked about around this table of snakes and stuff, then maybe some of it could get fixed or maybe he could possibly fix them. Maybe not, but uh, from the way I've seen you guys, you seem to play district on district here secretly.
Not secretly, I insist. The other districts. With my system and such, I have to interact with the other districts. However
See?
Malius, Nemesis, and the others do not have the same
Ideals?
I'm in charge of prisons.
If you're gonna talk, go somewhere else. What, you're Sachi's bodyguard?
Your councilmen. Oh, just for today. He brought me here so I could advertise myself. Pretend. A child, fanatic, a casino owner. And somebody I'm still trying to and an ancient Norse.
A skaldier.
What a strange place. Listen, I've been tasked by your councilman, oh, the robot. Anyways, your councilman told me that I will get paid. I hurt many, many people you might know. Don't worry, they are not your friends. But you know more about Lower Sepharah than I do. You would be helping me out a lot if you told me about more of the gang. I know of the scrappers and I have heard whispers of I want to kill them all so I can make money.
Did you say maelstrom? Cat gang?
The kitty cats, yes.
You wanna go fuck up a bunch of teenagers?
Oh, maelstrom. Pays well.
It's fucking pathetic.
I know, right? But it pays, apparently. His people and his insurmountable amounts of money couldn't get the job done. They had to call in somebody way above them. I'd be surprised if he could even afford it.
Hey!
If you're trying to get in on my deal of cutting down poor people trying to make a living, get in line. I've already got initiated into this task.
No way, Gormunder. You know I'd never get in your way, pal.
I'll consider that the first attack.
You could, but you know I'd block it.
Anyways, listen. I'm going to come to the meat rack soon. I want to tell you
I'll get you a postcard, you can come all over it, I, whatever.
Hamsky.
What?
I'll pay for information about these gangs.
How much?
You will not take me serious. I will offer up money. I'm going to be returning to the fortress. Going to reclaim the gold bars, I forgot. I should have more than enough to accommodate you afterward.
I'll think about it.
You will think hard. Put your pieties aside and understand that these gang members, they bother you, yes.
No. They're easy to handle, they don't bother us. I'll take the money, though.
You have to handle them and they attack.
Yes, look, I gotta get to a fucking businessman.
Mutually beneficial. Think hard, Hamsky, go forth.
I will.
Yeah, but we know that ain't you. I fucking cracked Adam's neck after the blast was done.
This motherfucker's evil, I gotta go to fucking meetings.
I fucking love
Bruh, okay. I don't know if I did that well or not.
Tailing up, uh, it has chameleon cloaking.
Ah, there's the boy.
You've been here, so I don't need to explain this to you. Yeah. Uh, one of these would have been tailing up, up on the location. Uh, if you have any form of magic sights, the sorts, nothing also, for some reason, you can't detect them. When it comes to sight as well, however, you can hear them, they're very light steps. If you've got any heat based stuff, they come up as like a cold blooded creature. No heartbeat, though.
Gross.
Apart from that, maybe once in a little while, you might see their fingers extend out a little bit, a little extra. Apart from that, nothing really else. From what you guys can see. And this is me just wanting to do this. God, I love this melody. Oh, fuck, I clicked it again. There we go. So you wanna see two of those up? Around this building, apart from that, none other, there'll be one at the door.
Sure. Yeah, dude. I'm ready to go cards up.
Yep, Hamsky. You can come in a little later, if you would like, cuz you did take a little bit extra, so you can just turn in this. Um. We can cards up in a moment. Three. Two, one.
Yeah, just Sam and Jazz. Cool. Bruh, there's no way Hamsky should be talking to Malius. I thought going up to him was a good idea, like just getting to know him, knowing him. But getting in his fucking face was fucking awful. Fucking creepy motherfucker, now he's coming down to the fucking meat rack. We're gonna have, I'm gonna have Rogue scan for him or some shit. Nah, cringe, what the fuck? We can go to the Lion Fork. It's probably still open, right?
Thanks, uh, for, um, for hosting me. For allowing me to have this time. I know I'm not like officially a council member yet or anything and that's kind of like a complicated thing, but I do speak on behalf of my father, so anything we discuss technically in the meeting
Do we have something planned tomorrow? I just wanna sit down, my chest fucking hurts. Been standing so long. Wait, do you want, what, you're saying yeah, but you left? Do you not wanna do it at Lion Fork then? Or do you wanna go back?